This conference will now be recorded.
Okay. I'd like to call the order, the September 21st, 2020 council meeting order at 7:00 PM. It looks like Susan Rose to recite the Pledge of Allegiance. Yes, I would like to do that. My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Susan. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda tonight? Okay, if not, would like somebody like to make a motion to accept the tonight's agenda?
I move to accept the agenda as presented.
Motion's been made, thank you. Is there a second?
All second.
Second's been made. Stephanie, would you call the roll, please?
Counselor McNair?
Yeah.
Counselor Webb?
Aye.
Counselor Allen?
Aye.
Counselor Wagner?
Aye.
Mayor Hobart?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Stephanie. There are no presentations tonight. I do not have a mayor's report tonight. So that moves us right into counselor committee reports. Does any council person have a committee to report on tonight?
I do.
Okay, Counselor McNair?
Yeah, the cemetery committee met up at the cemetery on their meeting last, can't remember what the date was. We had a chance to look at the Colobarium put in and they also approved, I think, the rate increases that were going to be presented to us in the future, the council. And they made a decision on the color of the benches. So that we can move forward on that. And other than that, it was nice to see the work that's been done up there.
Thank you, Counselor McNair. Yeah. Had a chance to go up there recently and view it and it really looks nice out there. What color of the bench is going to be, Bruce?
The, basically the same colors the Colobarium is. You know, it'll be two different colors. The dark color will be on the top and then the marble color will be the stand.
Very good.
Could be just the opposite too, I can't remember.
Sure. Thank you for that report. Any other committee meeting reports? If not, we'll move on. Are there any topics from the floor tonight, Stephanie? None. Moving on to item seven, consent agenda for acceptance, none. Number eight, consent agenda for approval, city council meeting minutes for September 8th, 2020. Be found on page one through five. Any questions or discussions? Okay, if not, would anyone like to make a motion to accept the meeting minutes for September 8th?
Is Counselor Wagner like to move to accept the, excuse me, consent agenda for approval?
Is there a second?
Counselor Webb will second.
Thank you, Counselor Webb. Would you take the roll call, please, Stephanie?
Mayor Hobart?
Aye.
Counselor McNair?
Yeah.
Counselor Webb?
Aye.
Counselor Allen?
Aye.
Counselor Wagner?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Stephanie. Moving right into unfinished business. COVID-related purchases can be found on page six through 10. Can't hear you, Josette.
Hold on.
Okay, now I'm unmuted? Okay. So I brought you guys this in regards to the discussion you had at your previous meeting. You wanted to see what we had purchased already in the cost and then requested purchases from the different departments. Really, City Hall does not have any further ones. We got the hand sanitizer stands, which are still waiting for hand sanitizer to get mounted onto those. And then the library did have some purchases, as you can see on page seven. The library has some requested purchases specifically to distance learning that they could bring in that would benefit the good number of kids that are in the city that are homeschooled. There's some programming. Requests that she's making for some math and history supplements and then a couple of tablets that when homeschoolers come to the library and the bank of computers is full, they could log on and do different programming in the library with those tablets. And go to a different area of the tablet, which would allow for them to use them kind of with social distancing. You'll also see attached the version of the hands-free faucet that we could find. None of our, without doing some work in electrical in the walls, none of the restrooms have electrical currently right near it. That's something you typically build in if you're going to do hands-free faucets. And ours don't have electrical by and without, you know, getting into the sheet rock and doing something more detailed like that. So we just included the one that's battery operated. And then we also included the battery operated or what an option for soap. One of the tricky things with the soap dispensers is our supplier gives us the dispensers for free. And they sometimes, well, probably five times in the time I've worked here, the certain type of soap will go out of production. And they'll give us new dispensers and a new type of soap. So that's a little concerning if we go in to purchase the hands-free ones and then can't get our hands on soap for that dispenser. Because I have just experienced the soap types go out of production. I don't know why. But that is an option if you guys wanted to do that. And then we also included kind of a just reasonable Chromebook that would have the camera and voice capability if that's something council was wanting to do. If these teleconference meetings continue or counselors are uncomfortable about using their home computers or that was also an option. But there's many Chromebooks out there, so this is, does not have to be the version. We just pulled one version that would meet the needs. So that's kind of what I have for the options. And then you guys were going to discuss it and let us know what you thought about the different requests and if you wanted to do any of the things we had discussed in the previous meeting.
Mayor Hobart, can I chime in on this?
I'm sorry, I just unmuted myself. You sure can, JR. Go ahead. Yeah, go ahead, JR.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can. Go ahead.
Joe said, did we get any estimates for the labor for installation on if we went like citywide? And try to make everything the same, so all your refills or do all the city buildings, all the parks? Because I think we have an opportunity.
I didn't get estimates on that.
Okay, I do, I just recently had a, went through all this kind of at work. And I can tell you those foam refills, they might look expensive, but we have hundreds of people using them and you never hardly have to fill them up because those packets last forever as it turns into foam. And then it's, it actually uses a lot less soap and it makes people think they have a lot more foam on their hands. And I guess they get a better cleaner hand out of it from everything I've read. And then also, I understand you're talking about power, that you, I know you can power them off low voltage, but you do have to hook into the electrical system. But they also have solar powered. They have ion battery powered that lasts for up to 30 years if you have a use every 10 minutes. They also have hydro-powered faucets if you really want to get fancy. And they also there's another one I'm forgetting about, but there's all kinds of options on those faucets. Where you don't just have a battery pack.
Thank you, JR. I'm sure we can, that might be useful information for us.
Yeah, I mean, it's not cheap to do the conversion, but the time you spend and manpower not having to put refills in too. You gotta calculate all that in. Actually, I think if you do the math, they, they might look kind of spending for those packets, but you save in the long run. But I mean, I can't always speak to the cheapo stuff running out and having to change. I mean, that's, I guess that's likely to happen with the year.
JR, would you be willing to maybe give our city administrator more of a detailed help with that? Maybe she could, or we, something to look into anyway, but.
Sure, I'd be happy to help if needed. I don't, I think you can look up most of this online, but.
Okay.
I know we, I know some of us have expressed concerns about the money aspect of it, which I can appreciate for sure, but there's a lot of people in this town that pay federal taxes and how much of it really comes back to Virginia. So I guess there's that option too, or the way you're looking at it.
Thank you, JR.
Oh, I had to add, thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other discussion on possible recommendations? I really like the the idea of new Chromebooks for our council. I'm using my own personal computer and I, you know, it's working fine, but there possibly could be some ethical things there that maybe not, I don't know, but.
I think what you mean is public record issues, not ethics.
Yeah. Thank you.
Counselor Webb?
It is worth.
Go ahead, Counselor Webb.
So I guess I'm noting a little hesitancy from staff on wanting to make these changes on the fixtures and the dispensers. So the upfront cost probably isn't an issue. Do we we get reimbursed for our own, our staff labor installation, I would imagine? There's a hesitancy like down, going down the road, maintaining these fancier appliances. See that faucet, what was it, about 300 bucks? So if we, you know, here again, looking for insight from staff on, you know, what has there been current rate of vandalism, replacement costs? You know, we have to replace these on our dime. But it looks like to me, we could always, we can always fall back where we are if this goes sideways on us. But yeah, I'd just kind of like to hear a little more from staff on. I can see there's hesitancy to move forward with this.
So it's not so much hesitancy. I just didn't know how, I mean, it was brought up by Counselor Allen alone last meeting. So I didn't want to take tons of time to research it if you guys aren't going to be for it as a majority. If you are, if you want us to look into, I mean, so they're all going to be a little bit different and that's part of my hesitancy in researching it. So our bathrooms with sheet rock are going to have kind of one issue, right? Then you got the parks, which they're cinder block or CMU. So those would either be a conduit that runs or we go a long-term battery or, you know. So when looking at how those faucets would run with electricity, there's probably four or five different versions we're going to have to address with the different type of restrooms they are and the different wall material behind them and where electricity runs in that relation. So I wasn't going to spend a lot of time until I knew you guys were like, yes, we want this. Then go find us exactly what it would be towards getting reimbursed for. Does that make sense? So I'm not hesitant to do it if it's what you guys want. I just didn't want to use a whole bunch of man hours looking into all the options if you guys were going to be like, you know, no. Because that happens sometimes.
Dale.
So do we have a track record on vandalism, having to replace faucets and dispensers and, I mean, has that been an issue?
It's not really, the ones in the parks are really the most exposed and those are kind of a beefier, not delicate metal faucet. So I don't think, I mean, I'm sure we can find a hands-free version that's for industrial type use. It will probably be a little bit more expensive than the one that I proposed there. But no, we really don't have a, that's not something that typically vandalize. It doesn't break easy, Dale. You know, they like to throw rocks in toilets and spray paint the walls and that, that type of thing.
So do we have any idea of the battery life on these, on the faucets? Because I mean, that looks to me, that's just the easy route to go. I wouldn't want to be doing a bunch of hard wiring. That'd be a lot of expense and tear up, but you know, if those batteries last anytime, I mean, whether you use four AA batteries, so.
Yeah, let me pull that up. Hold on. I can pull it up here.
Dale, my kitchen faucet lasts about two years.
Did your kitchen, similar to that?
Well, I just tell Dale, my own personal kitchen faucet lasted about two years, but public bathrooms, you might want to stay away from battery packs exposed, just obvious reasons. After batteries.
Yeah, I suppose that would be an issue if they figured it out, then we'd be putting batteries in there every week.
They can always run like PMT on the outside of the, of the CMU walls too and do it that way instead of tearing into the walls. But, I mean, my main thing is just talking about the sanitation with COVID going to go hang around for another year. How do we protect our people? And that's touchless as much as possible.
Any other discussion? Go ahead.
Supposed beyond COVID too, because I mean, all kinds of diseases spread in the bathroom, so. It would be an upgrade, but I hear where Josette's coming from on just how much we're behind this. Sounds like it's going to be a little bit upheaval to upgrade all the bathrooms.
I'm willing to look into it. If you guys want me to look into a few different you know, detailed options of it, if you're really wanting to switch out everything, we just have to go inventory, the specific types and mountings, because they, this are currently, most of them have two handles, a hot and a cold. The ones in City Hall have the little arm bar on top of it that you can turn on and off with your wrist, which I think that was their old-fashioned version of hands-free. You can turn it on without using your hands. Which they mount a little bit, their neck of them is a little less wide than the ones with the handles and the three holes. Does that make sense? So if there's something you guys want us to do, we can easily delve into it and kind of get way more specific on the cost and stuff.
Josette, maybe you should have a plumber go through and inventory everything and give you a bid and he'll do all the work.
Yeah, so the tricky part about that is I almost have to do the inventory first and then get the three bids if it's going to be over a certain amount of money. But that's still pretty easy for us to do.
Right.
Would council like to direct Josette to look into the faucets further?
I'd be good with that.
Counselor Webb's good with it.
I'm fine.
Counselor McNair?
I have no opposition to it.
Okay.
Okay, so going kind of back to, are we wanting to look into the hands-free foam dispensers as well? Those are a little easier because most of those are battery.
I would assume that we go hands-free on everything. That's just my opinion.
Okay, and what about the library's request?
I have no issue with that myself.
I totally support the library's requested purchases. I think it's a great idea.
Counselor Webb?
Yeah, I'm good with the library too.
Okay.
Where we at on the Chromebooks? I would support that. I think we'd need to get off of personal computers.
I would support that also.
Yep.
Do you guys have a maximum dollar amount you would like spend on each computer? I ask because it might be fairly difficult to find computers. I went to several stores this weekend looking for office equipment and everything from printers, computers to mouses were sold out. I did find these ones online last Wednesday. I don't know what there will be now, but if you guys could set a maximum dollar amount each, there'll be five. Or, I mean, a range.
Susan, go ahead.
If we're talking about getting council Chromebooks, I want to make sure people are actually going to use them because in past history they have not. And I know there was concern about using our own computers, but I think that was clarified a couple of years ago, as I recall, with our city recorder clarifying that there was not the risk necessarily to access to personal files above and beyond work that's done specifically for the city on your personal computer if there was someone who said, hey, I, you know, we're, we want to see what's on your computer.
Um, Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, Counselor.
Um, I was there on the council at that time. I would concur with Counselor Wagner's assessment. Um, we went with, oh, Microsoft, I can't remember what they're called. And, yeah, Surface. And basically, one person ended up using it. And it's basically comes down to communications. If you stay on Outlook, the government email, you're fine. They're not looking into your, anything past that.
Go ahead, Counselor Webb.
The way I understand this is if there is a question is called, they're going to come get your computer and go through it to look through all that. There's a lot of things on my computer, I mean, nothing illegal, but it's, it's, you know, I don't want my computer being gone. And, you know, I have a nice Apple computer that I use, so.
Why couldn't they just download your, your, onto a thumb drive? Why couldn't they just download your, uh, your, onto a thumb drive?
The way that the case law has shown is that when one of these public records requests comes up and a counselor or, sorry, a public official has been using a personal computer for work business, you have to provide your computer and someone will take the data off of there to make sure that everything is captured. It's not.
Do you just have to? But that, is that just provide access?
You would be without your computer. So that somebody can go through and make sure they get all the records. At, the likelihood that any of that would happen is very slim. Um, it's usually someone who's mixed their personal life with their professional life, um, and then it's, uh, uh, big undertaking to separate the two, um, and it's laborious for the person who's going through the data and uncomfortable because they might be having to read and review documents that both parties would be uncomfortable looking at. Um, like I said, as long as you keep the two separate, you're probably fine. Um, it's just, uh, you want to be, eh, right now, we're talking about it mostly for these meetings. They're for, due to COVID, you guys want computers so that you're not on your personal computers and you can use your cameras and participate in the virtual meetings. I mean, at the end of the day, that's really the question that's before you today. Right?
I, I think that, uh, Counselor Webb is worried beyond that. He's concerned, I say it, not worried.
I do not use my personal computer or my personal phone for work business. If that tells you anything.
Susan?
So in the interest of what's going on with the election and, um, because personally, I would not necessarily care about having one, but I think in the interest of the fact that you may have new counselors, um, I think that we should authorize, uh, $250 per Chromebook and purchase five, so that those who, a- and just make it a policy that that's what we use for council business, because when it moves on to the next person, all of that work that they've done can then be transferred to the next person.
Josette?
So Susan, I'm not seeing any that are below like 269. And, and I'm just, I'm just running on Amazon. Um, is there anywhere from 275 to 321? Then there's really, then they go up, but if we're looking for just the... If you see a 250 deal, let me know.
I personally would be okay with the Samsung, um, just listed here that Stephanie looked into on Wednesday for 299. And that has a microphone and a zoom camera too, so I'm assuming. You see that on page 10, I believe?
Yeah, I see that one, Rick. I'm, I'm just talk, I'm just looking up currently what's available, cause she pulled that up, um.
Yes. So it's like Dale has the Chrome, Chromebooks for 272, fine, 300. I mean.
Okay, I just didn't want you to say 250 and I can't find them and then I'm...
Oh yeah, no, there, and there's plenty, I mean, Smartbook, ACERS and Samsung's and Dell's. They're all in that range that I think would be sufficient for email, messaging and these meetings. If everyone will use them. I would like a commitment from our council that they will use them.
I'll use mine.
I will. I'm kind of getting used to the Zoom and it's easier for me to watch everyone and easier to call on and it's almost like in person, so. I, I like these now. So we're, would you staff like a general consensus to move forward with the purchasing of the five Chromebooks for our council?
Yeah, so if you just want to, um, reference the staff report and the items listed in the staff report and direct staff to move forward with purchasing and investigating those items? Because the only ones we're gonna investigate are faucets and dispensers, the rest of it was request to purchase.
Okay. Okay, anything else? Moving on to new business?
Are you gonna ask for, are you gonna ask for a motion to direct staff to move forward as directed?
Yes, sorry. Somebody like to make a motion to move forward?
Dale, do you have a question or are you gonna make a motion?
I was gonna make a motion.
Oh, okay.
I would make, I'd move that, uh, we direct staff to move forward with the identified, uh, CARES Act being purchases. Uh, that includes the Vrornonia Library request, the Chromebook request, with, I think we're putting a $300 maximum per computer and also to investigate the, the, uh, faucets and hands sanitizer dispensers further and bring that back to us.
Thank you Dale, is there a second?
Uh, this is Counselor Wagner, I'll second that.
Thank you, a second's been made, Stephanie, would you call the roll?
Counselor Allen?
Aye.
Counselor Wagner?
Aye.
Mayor Holbert?
Aye.
Counselor McNair?
Aye.
Counselor Webb?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Is there any new business? No new business. Looks like i- is Chief Connor on the line tonight?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, I'm gonna turn it over to you, Chief Connor, and did everyone get the, uh, the police report that Stephanie sent out today for our meeting? Anyway, I'll, I'll turn it over to the chief for his report.
All right, I thought I slipped one in here at the last minute. I haven't given you guys a report for a couple of months, so I put them all in one for June, July and August. Our calls for service for those three months were 1,049 roughly, um, and as usual, you guys can go through those if you'd like. Um, between July 2019 and June 2020, we responded for fiscal year, um, 3,029 calls for service. Um, the Axon body cameras arrived and, and those have been in service for a little over a week now and they are working great. And lastly, um, due to an abundance of my vacation hours, um, I will be taking some additional time off between September 23rd and October 17th. That is all I have.
Okay. Thank you, Chief, any, uh, Counselor Webb, you have a question?
Yeah, I thought I heard something on the news the other night, Chief Connor, that the feds were gonna do something with, uh, body cameras. Um, have you heard anything on that?
There, there's been quite a bit of scuttlebutt about body cameras and there's nothing official that's been dropped on us yet.
I'd like to make a comment. Um, I did a ride along, uh, with the chief about a little over a month ago for three hours in the morning and it, it was a really good experience, uh, it was the second time I've, I've done a ride along with our police department, first time with the chief, I, I, uh, got a little different perspective as to what our police do when and when they're off duty and, uh, we drove around the entire community and, and stopped in different areas and, um, it, it was a really good experience and I highly recommend that if any council member has an opportunity, a day off or something and, and, uh, would, would be interested in doing that, I highly recommend it. It's, it's a pretty good thing to, to, uh, do and, and it, it just kind of, I, I'm all about building relationships, um, with this, the, the position I'm in and it just, uh, helped build that relationship with the chief, uh, gave it a little bit more meaning to me, so. Um, thanks Chief for watching.
My passenger seat's always open.
Yeah, and thanks for what you're doing and, and, uh, I'm really proud of our police, um, that we have in this community and we're very lucky, so. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Okay. Are there any ordinances or resolutions? Nons? Okay, correspondence, CZ Trail Partner Tour invite. That could be found on page 11. Stephanie? Would you like to talk about that a little bit, or?
I can.
Oh, Josette, yeah.
So we received this invite for council to, uh, attend a meeting here in Vrornonia to somewhat just meet with the Crown Zellerback Partner Group. Um, they're gonna gather at the, um, this Friday at 9:30 in the morning at Black, Black Iron Grill, kind of in the grass area. And then they're gonna walk to Anderson Park to preview the new trailhead in connection to the Banks-Vrornonia Crown Zee connection there. And then, um, drive to the site of the new future Holt's Trailhead, which is at the end of Knott Street. And then go to the Rully Trailhead, um, which is back on Scapuce-Vrornonia Highway for a barbecue lunch. And this is just information they had sent, um, to you guys via correspondence to attend that. We are gonna post a notice that a quorum of the council may be meeting, um, so that you're covered that way, but might be interesting if you're interested in this connection and the group and what they're trying to do, um, you could attend.
I really wish I could, but I will unfortunately be out of town for that.
Okay, thank you, Josette. Okay, moving on to the city administrative report.
Okay, so you guys hopefully all got in your emails my city administrator report, um. Just in the nick of time, it seems public works closed up to dirt at Nickerson. So all of the pipe is on, completed on the properties, um, that are for sale or pending sale there. We're still gonna be working on the areas that are in the public right of way, um, crossing Nickerson Ave and Nickerson Loop up there at the top and then coming down the sidewalk, um, next to Mr. Schrader's property to the, a new catch basin there at the corner of Nickerson Ave and Knott Street. Um, so they're still, their goal is still to get that completed by the beginning of floodplain season, um, which is October 15th. Um, we have the second meeting of the appointed members of the, um, Equality and Racial Justice Group. Um, we've had a lot of good discussion and we worked on, um, different elements and the different resolutions of other communities that each person likes, so Stephanie and I are gonna be drafting from that discussion, um, a draft one to go out to the bigger group members and start kind of formulating a resolution that says what the majority of us want to say fits Vrornonia and can be ready to go to the city council as a draft for potential adoption, so we're gonna be doing most of that online, um, back and forth and then perhaps meeting one more time in person to go over the final stuff before we present it to you as council. Um, cemetery information, the Collibarian's in, you see a picture of it there. Um, we're working on getting a railing, uh, iron railing around it to kind of solidify it and then the goal is to potentially, so the Holt's family many years ago had put a hedge right along the property line of the cemetery house and the cemetery and the deer demolished it. But what still exists is the iron post with the plaque that says, "The Holt's Hedge." So our goal is to work with the Holt's family and reposition the Holt's hedge to go around the backside of the Collibarian and grow kind of up against the iron railing and do a rededication of the Holt's hedge as a new spot, so Ben's working through that. Um, hopefully at your October 6th meeting, you'll have the, coming to you an updated Master Fee Schedule Resolution with some new cemetery fees. Um, Ben's done a lot of work on what other cemeteries have done in packaging kind of options for people, cause a lot of people come into the death of a loved one and they're kind of overwhelmed and so in the Earn Garden, we really wanted to present a package that you could get a plot, you could get the open and close, you could put your loved one there and it's this one price for us. So that's gonna be coming to you guys with the staff report for updating those fees at your next meeting. Um, I did apply for the Award of Ex- for Excellence from the LOC. It was a bit more than the 250-word summary. It was like a three-page report, pictures, all this stuff, but I got it in, so fingers crossed. They're supposed to be, uh, looking at it over last week and this week and then they'll, they'll notify everyone that applied who was awarded, so. I haven't gotten an email yet. Um, I did send out the letters to, um, oh, and I have a typo in my report, Ms. Jan Bernardi and Mr. and Mrs. Titus regarding their letters they sent to council last week. So the black walnut in Spencer Park is my last thing. Um, I did start moving forward with the, what council wanted me to do with the resistograph testing and what I found out is that the resistograph is really only gonna test one spot. One, and then assume off of that test what the remainder of the tree's shell looks like. That's kind of how that works. So I did talk to a couple of different arborists and one of them does sonic tomography, which is more like a LiDAR version of testing a tree's shell. So they put sensors, they send the sonic in, it reads back, they can see how much of it has decayed, how much of it isn't. He said, "That's probably not what you need, I'll just come out and do a, how about I just come out and do a basic assessment?" So I had the three options of the base. out and do a basic assessment?" So I had the three options of the basic assessment. He was the most reasonable in cost, so he came out and did an assessment of the tree and he is not thinking the tree is in its dying stages. He said the break that we had was specifically related to how it was topped back in 2001. So when you top it and it grows straight up from an elbow, all of the weight of that is right there where it broke. So his proposal, and he was hoping to have it to me by today, but I didn't get it in any of my emails, is to just take the end weight off. So basically, if you look at that tree and you did like a halo, like a swooping U over what's growing out of the tree, you would take it back about five to seven feet, all the ends. He said, "For the most part, true, black walnut's the best tree to compartmentalize breaks." So it kind of starts healing and doesn't allow pathogens to get into breaks, like maples allow a lot of pathogens to get in and they start rotting right at the break kind of instantaneously. Where black walnut being a hardwood, it, it seals that better and half the time you, it'd be 20 years before you see any decay there. So I'm waiting for his report and then potentially if that's the way, because I said what our real risk and our issue was, is we want to do our due diligence for insurance-wise to not have something happen that we could have avoided. He said, "We could take back the section towards Mr. Myers, but that limb of all the limbs is the most straight. It's not bending, it's not fanning out like the rest of them are all kind of fanned out into the park." So I'm just waiting for his prescription, because that's what you call it when you're talking to an arborist, of what we should do with the tree. I asked him about that centered dead kind of stand that goes straight up. There's, if you've ever looked at the tree, there's a dead stem that goes straight up the middle. He does not propose taking that out. He said, "The one thing walnuts don't like is their crown to get water in it, like straight down the middle." And he says, "It's not harming anything to be, it's not decaying, it's just dried out walnut sitting up there." So that he was going to give us a prescription and have me bring it to you guys and then we'd have to discuss if the cost of something like that or the work to be done, what he's prescribing to be done is too much money, then we'd have a different discussion. But he thinks that the tree could be, the load could be lightened on it and we could keep it for a good long time. It's not in any kind of demise state at this time.
Any discussion on the walnut tree?
I think it's good news. That's about all I got to say. Hopefully, it's good news.
Yeah. Like hopefully I'll just be bringing that back to you guys on your October 6th meeting. Once I get his prescription, I'll probably get some bids based on that prescription so that we know a realistic amount of what it, what it would cost. Is it in our number you guys are all thinking of over, under? So that's my plan for October 6th.
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you, Josette. Okay, any items from the council? Any discussion? We're moving on to items from the mayor and counselors. Dale, go ahead. Dale, ahead.
Yeah. The, the Chinook are running pretty heavy right now and I kind of make my tour, my counts and check the lake pumps and go down to Rock Creek and check there. And the last two days I'm doing that, I ended up calling the police both times. Looked like we had a little bit of a break in there possibly at the sewer lagoons again. The west gate was fried open. I think Officer Hanson took that call. I'd say it was still open there today when I went by, so. It's afternoon, but hopefully staff will address that. Evidently those, those latches, they can, they can pry it enough to get it open. So I know we've been having those battery thefts down there, so I don't know if we got hit again or not. So anyhow. But yeah, if you're interested in seeing a bunch of salmon, I counted 42 in an hour today off the Green Bridge. That's the best count I've ever had since I've been doing it, so. I estimated probably 1,500 fish have moved up through Vernonia already this year.
That's awesome.
Counsel McNair, go ahead.
I spoke to Chris down there, Richardson, last week and they're blocking the doors on the truck there, so they can't really get at it as easily as they were in the past.
Okay, anybody else have anything? Counsel Allen?
Yeah, I got something, Rick. Thank you. Just so everybody's on the same page, I did send a couple of pics to our city administrator on the terrible thunderstorm we had, kind of did a number on a few sections of culvert on the lower part of Arkansas. It was quite, it looked like a river. It was pretty amazing. Too bad I didn't get video of it, but it was actually water was running through the lawn of the Bed and Breakfast. Quite a ways up into their grass. It was kind of a mess, so there's probably some work to, work to straighten out there and then also this little alley behind me washed out so bad I, I mean, we're, we're trying to put rock back in, but there's, you know, 16, 18 inches of ditches that are really hard. People are tearing off their mufflers and stuff, so. There's not much, not much a person could do unless we pour concrete or something in there unless we can get this water moved over to a ditch or something. So I'm hoping the city can take a look at that because it's been a, you know, 10, 15-year battle for the people that use this alley back here ever since the, the city contracted someone to chew it up and put chip seal down that failed and actually made the condition way worse. So we do got some water damage up on the way here and probably other places, I'm sure, but that's about all I had to say about that. And then also, are we off water restrictions now? That'd be a question for Josette.
Yes, I posted that we are no longer on water restrictions earlier today.
Oh, okay, great. I kind of figured so. I'm done.
Thank you, JR. Anybody else? If not, I think we're ready for an action item summary, Josette.
Okay, hold on here. Okay, so I just have that we're moving forward with allowing the library to purchase their requested purchases and the staff will be moving forward to purchase the Chromebooks with $300 cap each and investigating more of the hands-free faucet and hands-free soap foam dispensers for the different bathrooms that the city owns. And we are moving forward with that water damage on the new storm drain that Mr. or Counsel Allen talked about already. And that's what I got.
Okay. Looks like we're ready to adjourn the council meeting if there's no further discussion. I will adjourn this council meeting at 8:00 PM. Meeting adjourned.